Good evening, I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville and the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, the Successor Agency, the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the City Council performing the housing functions of the former Victorville Redevelopment Agency. At this time, we'll open the meeting and we have a public comment, and I do have one card, Bob Harriman.
Evening, Council. Pardon my appearance, I just got off work. I've been living in this town for thirty-five years, I've been here since there were ten thousand people, since Councilman Rothschild was my wife's schoolteacher, and I'm getting really annoyed. First of all, I had somebody hit my truck last week on the corner of Hisperia Road and Bear Valley with a sign, twirling a sign, alright? Is this trash gonna keep going on? Do these people have workman's comp? Do these people know they're blocking the handicap ramp for the sidewalks? Do these people know they're on city property? Do their employers carry workman's compensation for them? Do they have a permit that they're supposed to get for these signs? And is this stuff gonna keep going on? Because I've had it. Secondly-
Wait, wait, wait. What truck are you talking about, a city truck or what?
No, my truck, my work truck.
Twirling a sign.
Oh, oh, okay.
A twirling sign, yeah.
Are we all on the same page?
I gotcha.
Okay. Secondly, I am going around my neighborhood every week, taking down garage sale signs. Here's one this week on every light pole in my neighborhood, "Jobs," with tear-offs with a phone number, advertising "Jobs." I've had it, okay? I took fifteen of these down this weekend, okay? And it's none of your fault, I understand that, but there is an ordinance in this city against doing this kind of stuff. How are we gonna police it? Because I'm willing to give my time with my work equipment, since I'm so slow as a contractor, to help out. This is making our city look like trash! Have you ever been to Los Angeles and been down Hollywood Boulevard and all that? A year's worth of stuff on the poles? This is what it's getting to look like around here, alright? I can't take it anymore. Yesterday, I had somebody try to do one right in front of my house. I told her, "Don't you dare put that up there." She said, "It's none of your business." Well, yes, it is my business, okay? Alright? She got mad at me. Oh, well, alright? Now, I've been a fine citizen of this city for a long time. Bob Hunter, I was an appointee of the Community Services Committee ten years ago. I want to be involved again. So if any of you, any of you, are looking to appoint somebody that is gonna take a little pride in this town and be involved, you're looking at 'em right now. I'm ready to get back into it, because it's just getting out of hand. Now, the sign ordinance, I know there's a sign ordinance. These people can't keep twirling signs on city property, okay? That's not right. I have to have a home occupation permit just to put my address on my business license, okay? Do these people that- I have people in my neighborhood that have a yard sale every weekend, every weekend. Well, they're conducting business. You're not allowed to have a garage sale every weekend. There's one guy, he goes out a hundred strollers, a hundred strollers, every weekend, bass nets, anything with a baby. He's conducting business out of his yard. I can't take it anymore. The only reason I'm still in my home is because I've been in it for twenty-three years and I have way too much invested in it to walk away from it, or to even sell it for that matter, because I would get about a dollar out of- I mean, it's lost thirty or sixty percent of its value. What are we gonna do? We gotta do something. I've been calling this stuff in. Here's another one, rent. Everybody's putting renter signs on, like the developers used to. Arrows here, open house, they're doing them everywhere, okay? Do these people know that to advertise a home for rent, there should be a sign or an ad in the paper and a sign in front of the house? They don't go everywhere. They're in the city easement that I pay my CCNRs for, for the landscape around the neighborhood, and they're all over the place. Now, I give you this, that the ground maintenance contractor, Stoffers, removes them, as he should, but they show up every other day. It's the same people doing it, I've called code enforcement with their phone numbers, and it keeps continuing to happen. Now, back to the twirling of the signs, this has gotta end, okay? Those are not jobs, those people don't pay those people, right? They pay them cash. There's, like I said, what is somebody in a handicap electric thing gonna do when some idiot is twirling signs and dancing with headphones in his ear on the sidewalk right in front of the handicap ramp? Do we agree on that?
Bob, obviously, we cannot respond during public comment, and I'm sure you're well aware of that.
Okay. I wasn't aware of that, but, okay.
Yeah, we will take all of your comments into consideration, and we will look into all the things that you brought up tonight.
Okay. Because, listen, guys, and ladies, when I do a concrete job on Bear Valley Road, or anywhere for that matter, I used to put up a sign saying, "Another quality concrete job by High Desert Concrete Incorporated." Well, I had to take those down. Had to take them down. They wouldn't let me have them up. But these people can twirl signs like idiots, alright? Now, the other day, this guy twirls a sign and loses it and drops it right in the hood of my truck, okay? That's gotta end. There's not enough room on those easements for people on public property to be doing that kind of thing. They should be, if they want to twirl signs, they can do it right in front of the store, not along the street. It's getting ridiculous, okay? That's my opinion, you guys will all have yours, okay? But one other thing, and I've already, let me repeat myself. I am here for you, Councilman Rothschild, you, Mr. Kennedy, you, you, you. I want to get back into things, okay? So if you guys need somebody on the Community Services Committee this time, I want to be the one, alright? Mr. Hunter's not around anymore, we all know that. I've met Ryan at Bob's house on get-togethers before, so he knows exactly, he knows well aware, I've also written into you, emailed you before, he knows what I'm about, and I'm serious. I've been a citizen here for way too long, and I'm not gonna sit back and watch this city go to hell, okay? Thank you for everybody listening.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the council on a public comment?
I just have a comment, brings up a point about liability for the signs. My granddaughter was walking, she got hit with one of those, and I guess she, you know, she, well, she lives by herself, so I guess she went over and checked with whoever owns those, the owner of the store advertising the signs, I don't know what happened, but that's a good question, what, who's liability?
Definitely worth looking into, you know, depending on if they're on public property or private property. They're certainly not allowed per the Muni Code, so.
Clearly an activity the code enforcement folks should get involved with.
Just real quick, because we need to go into closed session, we've got a lot to-
You can't stand there and give dogs away. I know for a fact that's an ordinance, so why can you stand there and twirl signs, okay?
Yeah, no, good point, and we will look into that, yeah. I couldn't agree with you more.
I think this has a-
Yes, you can. Alright, with no one else, we'll turn it over to your city attorney to present closed session.
Thank you, Ma'am McCaffrey. We actually have five closed sessions tonight. Item number two is the City's successor agency pursuant to government code 54956.9 subsection C, potential litigation. Items three and four are fully set forth on the agenda. Three is litigation, anticipated litigation pursuant to 54956.9 subsection B3B. And item four is real estate negotiations, the properties and their assessed parcels are all listed on the agenda, that's pursuant to government code 54956.8. On the original agenda, item number five actually should be listed as is shown on the addendum, it is anticipated litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9, again, subsection B3A. And a related item under the Joint Powers Financing Authority, also under 54956.9B3A. To the extent there is any reportable action with respect to any of these items, we will do that either at the conclusion of the closed session or immediately prior to the commencement of the seven o'clock meeting.
Okay, with that, we'll move into closed session. Good evening, I'd like to call back to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville and the City Council sitting as the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency, the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, Victorville Water District, and the City Council performing the housing functions of the former Victorville Redevelopment Agency. We will now have any announcements out of closed session.
Thank you, Ma'am McCaffrey. There were five items on the closed session, and there is no reportable action with respect to any of those items. The items and descriptions are fully set forth on the agenda.
Alright, thank you. We'll now move into our invocation and pledge of allegiance. Our invocation this evening will be led by Minister Scott from Burning Bush Church and a pledge of allegiance by our Victorville Police Department Police Chief, Captain Don Yoder.
Father God, as we come into this session this evening, Father, we know that you are in complete control, Father God, so I ask now, Father, that you would speak to, touch, and meet every person in this room right where they are, Father God. We thank you for this opportunity to come together. We know that the government rests upon Jesus' shoulders, Father God. It was dedicated by you, Father God, through Christ Jesus. So have your way in this place tonight, Father God. Bless each and every council member, mayor, pro temp, anything that's in this house. Father, you touch it, you have them speak your will and do your will. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
You wanna come forward? I know you have a presentation to make, so turn it over to you.
Always follow instructions. On behalf of the supervisor, Brad Misselfeld, who is out of the area tonight, I have a few presentations to make to the COPs, so we can come forward. I'm rich in the name, blame it on Sophia and the mayor. I'll only read one of them. It reads, San Bernardino County Certificate of Recognition awarded to Nancy Berna, says Supervisor Brad Misselfeld, First District, County of San Bernardino, does hereby commend and congratulate Nancy for being named Citizen of the On Patrol of the Year by the Victorville Pronounce your name.
Socorro Cuevas.
And yours reads the same as Nancy's, congratulations from the board of supervisors. San Bernardino County Certificate of Recognition awarded to Ray E. Camp, signed Brad Misselfeld. Yours reads the same from the board of supervisors, San Bernardino County, is awarded to you tonight for Citizen on Patrol of the Year by the Victorville Station. Yours reads Certificate of Recognition awarded to John Frazier, signed by Brad Misselfeld on today's date, congratulations.
Thank you.
Now, this is the man, right? Yours looks different. Says Supervisor Brad Misselfeld, First District, County of San Bernardino, does hereby commend and congratulate Roberto for being named Volunteer of the Year by the Victorville Police Department for his extraordinary donation of time and expertise as a boxing coach for Victorville Police Department. Congratulations. And yours reads the same, it reads the same from the supervisor, Brad Misselfeld, congratulations. Yours, you are the Explorer of the Year by the Victorville Station, signed Brad Misselfeld, County Supervisor. Congratulations. Congratulations. Yours reads the same, Certificate of Recognition awarded to Kyle Schuler, Brad Misselfeld's office, today's date, congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you to you all, congratulations for everything you do for our city. Thank you. I've asked Mayor Pro Temp Rudy Cabralis to come down here with me to present a proclamation on behalf of the City of Victorville and the City Council to Roberto Espinoza. Roberto approached both Rudy, as well as our then-police chief captain, Cliff Reynolds, about starting a police activities league, and I think Rudy and I, in tandem, went to our police chief and said, "What do we need to do to get this done?" Little did we know that we were both trying to get it done at the same time. But Roberto's done a great job, not only in the City of Victorville, but also in neighboring communities in Hisperia and Apple Valley. He's known as coach around the valley, and he's been named Citizen of the Year, and we just want to congratulate you and present you with this proclamation, and thank you for everything that you're doing to promote our Police and Activities Fire League. So, here you go.
Thanks, sir.
And I guess I'd be remiss if I didn't ask all of you in the audience, we are looking for support for the Victorville Police and Fire Activities League, so if you're so inclined, we would appreciate donations and support, and if you have any questions regarding that, I would direct you to our Captain Cliff Yoder. Thank you. Okay, we'll now go into the presentation of the agenda by our city clerk.
City Council of the City of Victorville welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. It is requested that all present please silence cell phones, pagers, and other electronic devices, and that personal conversations be kept to a minimum during the conduct of the meeting. Persons who wish to address the council on a specific item which appears on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards that have been placed on the agenda table in the council chambers lobby and give it to the city clerk for the record prior to consideration of the item. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card when the item comes up for discussion by the city council. The public comment period is the time and place for the general public to address the city council on any item within their jurisdiction that is not on the agenda. It is requested that a speaker card also be submitted to the city clerk for anyone who wishes to address the city council during the public comment period. Pursuant to government code section 54954.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less, as deemed necessary by the mayor, depending upon the number of individuals desiring to speak. All communications are to be addressed directly to the city council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Individuals who fail to adhere to these guidelines may be asked to yield the floor. Any individual or group who engages in disruptive conduct during the meeting will be removed from the chambers by order of the mayor. Disruptive conduct includes, but is not limited to, addressing the council without being recognized, not addressing the subject before the council, repetitiously addressing the same subject, failing to relinquish the podium when requested to do so, verbal outbursts or comments from the audience. Thank you for your cooperation and adherence to these rules. All documents to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the city council. And for the record, there is one correction on the agenda index. Item number eight indicates that a draft staff report is available. The agenda staff report that is included is the final staff report. And additional information has been presented tonight for item number ten, and that is on the dais for the council's review. Those are all the revisions I have, Mayor McInnis.
Alright, we'll now move into public comment, and I have several cards. We'll start with Dan Tate.
Dan Tate, 9187 Elm Street in Phelan. I was asked to speak to you on behalf of the Victorville, Old Town Victorville Ad-Hoc Committee. In soliciting my ideas on how to revitalize Old Town, I came up with two comments. One was market forces, and the other was change the culture. In asking to explain what that meant, by market forces, I meant that activity and development seeds development. So they asked me to go further, and I explained to them, back in nineteen, in the mid-1990s, I was responding to an RFP by the County of San Bernardino, and I came to the City of Victorville and I said, "Listen, you guys are putting landscape and fancy light posts downtown, that's great, but it doesn't get development. Why don't we encourage the county to put this development in Old Town?" And I received fierce resistance. "No, we want it on the Rogersdale property. We want it in the Civic Center." And I pleaded with them, "The county is not gonna put it there because they're very sensitive to land values, and it doesn't meet their criteria." What if the City of Victorville, the council, adopted a policy that encouraged all RFPs where it fit the RFP to go into Old Town? Because what you'd get when you have a new development, and I'm not proposing the government go out and spend money, but for projects that are already slated to be approved, Department of Social Services, DMV, county judicial centers, what better way, without costing the city money, to encourage development in Old Town than to seed it with new development? Secondly, and one step further, what would it have done to put Dr. Pepper Snapple on National Trails Highway, where Dr. Pepper paid four dollars and seventy-five cents a square foot for land, with the city contributing another ten and a half million dollars towards the public improvements? Imagine what that would have done, putting that development on National Trails Highway. Secondly, talking about changing the culture, two years ago, in a community development committee meeting with then Sheriff Rod Hoops, I respectfully called Rod Hoops a hypocrite. And he says, "What do you mean?" I said, "You're saying that you are, for public safety, you're proactive." And I say, "You know, you just let a YMCA that was proposed for the City of Victorville go away for the lack of funding, while the City of Victorville spent ten and a half million dollars for a bar at a golf course. You should have been at the dais, pounding on the lectern, demanding that the city put the money into our kids." He said, "Dan, I don't get involved in politics." And I said, "You know, you don't understand, it's not about politics. It's about being proactive. It's about paying to keep them out of jail and not paying to lock them up in jail." And what better way to revitalize Old Town than to create a meaningful engagement, a development that encourages kids, that gives them inspirational, influential engagement? When I went to, for two years, I've been trying to develop an activity and development center, I went to Dr. Marsden, and Dr. Marsden says, "Dan, I really admire your efforts of what educational facility in Old Town, but we don't need education. We got that covered. We need activity. One of the biggest concerns plaguing our city right now is our kids do not have a safe place to play." Says, "Every day we police our schools in Old Town, and every day we find condoms, we find drug paraphernalia. Our kids, we find our kids roaming the street waiting for their parents to come home at seven o'clock. There is no safe place in Old Town for these kids to engage in." So I'm saying, what better way to revitalize- So I'm saying, what better way to revitalize Old Town than to create an environment that's going to change the culture, that's going to give these kids the inspiration and the dreams that they can get outside these boundaries, because they're disenfranchised. I hear somebody else the other day referred to it as a Mason Dixon line, and I think there's a lot of truth to that. We've forgotten about them down there. For every dollar we spend on our kids, we're going to save $10 to $15 later on. Two years ago, I went to Tacoma and toured neighborhoods just like Old Town Victorville. Activity and after-school developments that changed and transformed neighborhoods. They put these $10 million facilities, that were community facilities, that housed nonprofits, senior citizens' centers, and mostly centers for our kids. The entire neighborhood's transformed, the school district's transformed. So I think there's a way we can do this, but it just seems that Mason Dixon line does exist. So I would encourage the council to start looking at policies that can start redirecting our resources in a more efficient manner.
Thank you. Barbara Powers.
Yes, I wanted to thank the council for letting us develop an ad hoc committee for Old Town. And we also want to thank you for what we feel is the first step of the city council that you're voting tonight, looking into speed limits and parking for Old Town. That's just really important. And then the committee, we have been meeting every Thursday in the Barber College, once a week. And we've had great meetings. The deputies met with us one time, and we've had much of the city coming together. And we appreciate Angela meeting with us on the monthly meetings. It's been very helpful. And that's why I wanted to just say thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Bill Snadeker.
Hello. Sorry, I don't forget later on. The reason I'm really here today is to thank the City of Victorville for changing policy. I don't know if it's official yet, but I saw it in the newspaper today. And just as a precursor, over the last two weeks, I went down to apply for rezoning again in the building that we're in. And I dealt with a Joe Sledgers and a Michael Szarsky, very cordial, very willing to work with me, very polite, got back with me promptly on the phone. And so rather than always hearing negative, I wanted to make sure that brought to your attention that, you know, that there are those that are in the city council, that are the offices, that are, everybody's trying to help us as small business, and I thank you for that. And I wanted to share that with you, so you didn't think I came out, you know, shooting both guns. But a few years ago, I went to the city council because I saw it writing on the wall, our business was slowing down, our party rental business. And my daughter-in-law asked, "Maybe we could use our building for a childcare center." And we were quickly turned down by the city. So then I went back a short time later, and again, and I said, "Well, we don't have our recycling center." And they said, "Well, you're not zoned for recycling either." And I said, "Well, what can I do?" And they informed me that I was zoned to be able to open up a dance center. And so I went back again a couple of weeks, because again, we're in that same situation. The economy hasn't really improved all that much, though, as you hear on the news. So I thought, "Well, I'll give it a go again." And I came back, you know, in the last couple of weeks, and thought, "Well, maybe," because a number of years ago, it cost you $800 to apply for a rezoning in the City of Victorville, and then you weren't guaranteed that it was going to be changed, so it was like you're rolling the dice on the $800. And so when I came back in, I talked to an individual, and again, I was turned down. And I just shared with him the story that I've shared with you. And he said, "We're sorry, that's the policy." And I said, "Is this a city policy, or is this a state policy?" And he says, "Well, it's city." I said, "Well, if it's city, then that means city can also change it." And he said, "Well, this has been in place for 30 or 40 years, and that's the way the city runs." And I quickly informed him, "You need to come to my neighborhood, because I've lived there for 23 years. My business is within a couple of blocks where I live. My neighborhood has changed drastically in 23 years. And yet I'm still, I was zoned to admit all these businesses. Now I have probably seven bars that are within a mile of each other, close to my place of business. Those were zoned, those were okay. We have auto mechanics around us." And so he said, you know, "Let me turn you over to my supervisor," which she then turned me over to Michael. And Michael pulled me aside, and I explained to him my circumstance, that we're desperate, the party rental is slow, I'm upside down on this building, but we put our life savings in as a down payment to get into this building, and I haven't lost anything until I lose this building." And he said, "Well, let me talk to my supervisor, and I'll get back with you." He said, "There are, sometimes we can make exceptions." And so he called me back a couple of days later to inform me that the city had approved, that they said, "Go ahead." And we were trying to do some sort of farmer's market or retail in the front part of our warehouse where we're at. And so I wanted to bring that to you, when I opened the paper today. And so one of the items that you had, that you were discussing, would be, you know, dealing with, you know, the zoning or the businesses and lightening up on regulations. And I gotta tell you, there's a lot of small businesses. It's unfortunate, because for the last number of years, if we had been able to do this, you'd have been receiving retail sales or tax dollars coming back from maybe small businesses, where we've been desperate as a city for money. Then you see, we've actually cut ourselves off by strangleholding small businesses. So as you discussed this this evening, would you please all understand that there are small businesses that are still hanging on out there, even though they're saying things are getting great. But understand that for me to pull permits, I'm already, I'm probably, no, I'm not probably really about it, about $70,000 in the hole right now, trying to hold on to the property, to my business. And so rather than spending this money on all these major upkeeps to improvements to our building, et cetera, you know, I just need to be able to operate and do business in the place of business I'm already in. I've been there for 12, 14 years. I just have to change venue. So please consider that when you're discussing tonight in regards to lightening up on some of the regulations, okay? Thank you.
David Mueller.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name's Dave Mueller, I'm with highdesirtpolitics.org. I wanted to start off by pointing out that last meeting, Mayor Protem Cabrealis said that he had never attended a Bears meeting. That's a true statement. However, he's not being forthcoming in the fact that Bears came to him at meetings here at City Hall. So just wanted to point that out for the record. You did attend meetings, your name's listed with John Gargan's name and everybody else that was at the meetings, here at City Hall with the CSD, and your wife was there, too. So I'm, for the record, correcting the record. This is what people get from the incumbents that plan on running for reelection in this city. They tell half-truths or outright misrepresent what is really going on. Those incumbents should resign in shame for what they have done to the finances of this city as a result of not bad markets, but decisions you've made over the last 20 years. See, some of those are from failed power plants, wastewater plants that don't work right, just ridiculous ideas that you thought you'd become a nation-state. And the state of California was above you, watching everything you were doing, and purposely doing things boxing you in with legislation. Because we're a minority here, we're Republicans, we're conservatives. And they just outmaneuvered you. The power plant's a perfect example. You may have sovereign immunity from mistakes made, which was the purpose of that immunity when the laws were written, or nobody would want the risk of being in public office. But if it is discovered that what has been going on was a conspiracy, then RICO statutes apply, and I hope you all go to jail. Capone thought that it was his ability to keep people afraid which would keep him from ever being prosecuted. It was a bean counter that suggested checking their personal assets against what they reportedly earned. It didn't match, and the rest is history. Thank you very much.
All right, that is all the cards I have under public comment. I do have other cards for other agenda items on the agenda tonight. So with that, we'll move on to our regular agenda items. There are no items at time of posting under the Library Board of Trustees, the Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, or the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority. Moving on to agenda item number eight, under the successor agency to the redevelopment agency. This is City Council, City Victorville acting as successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency in adopting resolution R-S-A-12-002. And Mr. Mathes Slur, do you want to elaborate on this issue?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council, thank you. This item is an item that we've been dealing with resulting from AB 26 being upheld, effectively causing for the dissolution of redevelopment agencies throughout the state of California. This document is somewhat similar to the previous actions taken by both the former RDA and this body as a successor entity. In the EOPS documents, it is different as this ROPS document, which is called the Recognized Obligation Payment Schedule. ROPS is what we typically call it. Deals with something a little bit different in nature, in that it identifies the expenditures for an expanded period of time, but it also serves more or less as the document that would enable the successor entity, or the successor agency, to actually receive the funds from the Real Property Tax Trust Fund that's created as a result of the dissolution. It's required that we adopt this before March 1st, and then becomes an operating document of the successor agency, which it will then use, again, with its oversight board, once that oversight board is approved and put in place by May 1st, we're hoping. There is one amendment that we would like to make to the spreadsheet. And I know the spreadsheet's a little bit tough to read, because there's a lot of information on it. But item number 68, we found a need to make a change. Currently, item 68 calls for a June and an anticipated June obligation of $175,000. We need to increase that to an obligation of $700,000. It's an item that involves a booking where grant funds were used to fund certain infrastructure improvements, and the grant fund effectively has to be reimbursed from redevelopment agency funds, which was consistent with previous action taken by the redevelopment agency pursuant to an owner participation agreement. So with that, that's the only change we have recommended. Otherwise, staff recommendation remains in place.
Mr. Mathes Slur, there are several items on the spreadsheet that are identified. The amount is undetermined. Will that come back to us in a future amendment?
They will. And the way this document is, or the way the process is set up, is that we're required to approve these RUP documents every six months. So effectively, the document that you're approving tonight takes us January 1st through June 30 of this current calendar year. It's expected that before July 1st, we'll bring back another ROPS that would effectively deal with the remaining six months of the year. And that cycle is expected, in fact, it's written into the law, it's expected to continue going forward.
But we're required now to identify the fact that we're going to have this obligation in the future.
That's correct. What we've been advised and what we've decided to do is put everything that's known to us, whether in value or not, we've put the obligations as we know them on the list. An example, you know, that we're undetermined is showing up on the ROPS would be OPAs, where the OPAs have surviving life but haven't yet been realized in terms of performance. So the obligation likely would be in future year as the performance obligations by the developer actually carried out, because it's not known today, is why you see an undetermined. So certainly, those would come back at a later date.
Mr. Mayor. Keith, we've been working a long time now down the Old Town area, assimilating under the redevelopment agency properties. Some of these properties are little slivers, 25-foot by something, and then another one, 50-feet. I mean, it was incredible, the amount of history and the time. And now we're beginning to assimilate these into larger parcels to hopefully develop the Old Town area. And now with the dissolution of the redevelopment agency, how do we identify this property? Is it identified as an assimilated properties? And how is the values determined? Or are the individual properties? I'm assuming we still retain, or one of the reasons we took the successor role is that we wanted to retain at least the zoning and the development right structure to it. But what about the financing portion here? I mean, where does that come in? Where's somebody coming in, says, "I want a dollar for that middle piece there." Can we say no now, or what?
Well, the values can't arbitrarily be established, but the dissolution process does require a liquidation of real estate assets that are owned by the former RDA and now operated by law by the successor agency. In Old Town, we did acquire a lot of property. In fact, we acquired a lot of property where we actually demolished a lot of substandard buildings, hoping to redevelop those properties with a much higher and better use. But effectively, pursuant to the law, all of the properties that we acquired scattered throughout Old Town have to go through a dissolution process. That's a process that hasn't been defined. It's certainly not defined in the statute, but it's a process that we'll have to, once the successor agents, I'm sorry, once the oversight board is in place, we'll have to hash out with them as to the goals and objectives of the oversight board and an actual process in deciding which of the properties that are under the control of the successor agency, which and when do they actually go to market? Because one of the things, one of the goals, the overarching goals in the dissolution bill, is to try to obtain the maximum amount of resale for the properties. And certainly, it's going to be debated as to whether or not right now is the most appropriate time to be trying to achieve the highest value for those properties.
That brings me to a very significant point, at least with respect to this city, and particularly the Old Town area there. I mean, I would hate to think that we would have to identify individual properties that we would, as a successor agency, remember the other ones more regional, the next level up, that we would say to this regional board, "Hey, we've assimilated this, this is our zoning pattern, this is what we want. We don't want this developed as individual, tiny lots like the old days. We want a much larger parcel, we want to set the zoning standards down there, and whatever semantics we want to build into that." That's our right as a successor board, speaking to the regional board right above us, right?
Yeah, and I think you certainly have as an option, as a city, independently, to decide if you want to address zoning and land use-related matters down there. Certainly, if, for example, we were advised tomorrow by the oversight board, if the oversight board was in place to sell certain properties, we would likely have to have the properties appraised first, and it would likely be appraised based upon the current or the now land use, adopted land use policies for that area. So to the extent the city has different desires for some of those properties irrespective of the dissolution process, it still has land use authorities that it can exercise, however, we have to go through a formal planning process to execute that.
And the oversight board isn't in existence yet, right? It's like May or June or something?
Supposed to be in place by May 1st.
Same time, this interim time here is rather a no-man's-land. Certainly shuts down any transactions, bank transactions, bonding, or anything else is probably pretty much dead until that board actually gets its feet on the ground and puts a policy in place that says the relationship between the successor agencies and the regional oversight board. Eventually, do we get a, does the City of Victorville get a seat on the oversight board eventually?
It does get at least one that will be appointed. The law says the mayor can appoint, when the appointments, and likely will take it up next month as some of our actions. But one of the items that we'll be discussing next and looking at next is how to fill the seats that the city is allowed to obtain on the oversight.
Thank you.
But what this means is, every redevelopment thought, whether it was a plan or not, every redevelopment thought we had in Old Town is off the table. All we can do with the property we have in Old Town is to dispose of it.
Option you have right now is to start disposing of the property. If independently you wanted to decide something as a city, you certainly retain, independent of this whole exercise. You have land use authorities. of this whole exercise, you have land use authority, you have the ability to affect land use down there. Right now, the land uses are governed by a specific plan. That's an old specific plan that I believe was adopted back in 1995 or 1996. It's a plan that certainly, you know, we have looked at as whether or not it's the most appropriate long term to achieve some goals down there. In fact, because of that, you know, we have used a lot of tax increment money to assist in developing a new specific plan, which we've studied and developed a draft of, but certainly thought it wasn't appropriate to bring it forward, and therefore, that document hasn't been made public yet with the council and the commission. Right now, just because of the economy, hasn't been determined the best time to bring that forward.
Those properties haven't been merged or consolidated, have they? They're still individual as you bought them?
That is correct. That is correct. I'm not aware of any where we've done lot mergers.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Protem Cabralis. Motion carries with Councilmember Vias voting no.
Right, there were no items. Time of posting for the Joint Powers Financing Authority. Moving on to the Victorville Water District, we have the consent calendar.
Motion by Mayor Protem Cabralis, second by Councilmember Kennedy. Motion carries unanimously.
No items for the City Council performing housing functions of the former RDA. Moving on to the City Council, we do have an appeal hearing. This is agenda item number 10.
Mr. Mayor, I have property interests in close proximity, so I'm going to recuse.
This is an appeal hearing called to hear arguments for or against the denial or approval of PLN 11-00015. This is in relation to the county probation office. Mr. Robertson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, Mr. Webb is going to give a presentation on this item and give its history, as well as discuss what happened at the planning commission.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. At a regularly scheduled meeting held on January 11th, the planning commission, by unanimous vote of 5-0, denied this planning case, a conditional use permit to row a probation office used as a day reporting center for juvenile and/or adult offenders within a two-story office building located within the administrative professional office district nearby on Sage Street within the Civic Center. Based upon a failure to satisfy all of the findings required by code for granting conditional use permits per Municipal Code Section 16 3.02.050. Just in background, day reporting centers require offenders who are on pretrial release, probation, or parole to appear at a specific location on a frequent and regularly scheduled basis. The proposed day reporting center would provide counseling, employment, and vocational training services Monday through Friday. We were originally told that 40 probationers are expected to visit the site on a daily basis, with approximately 20 probationers at any one time receiving classroom instruction in designated conference rooms. Currently, one branch probation office is located at Civic Center Drive, and one branch parole office is nearby on Park Avenue. These serve the entire population of the Victor Valley. The proposal would add a third location for this type of correctional facility, all within a half mile of each other and all within the city of Victorville. The commission was able to make the following Municipal Code findings required for the granting of a conditional use permit. Finding A: The proposed location of the conditional use is in accord with the objectives and requirements of the Development Code. Municipal Code states that the intent of the administrative professional office zone is to provide for location of offices for professional use of services and business activities which involve a relatively low volume of direct contact. Staff found that bringing in additional 40 criminals a day into the Civic Center is contrary to the intent of the Development Code. Although the existing probation office is within the vicinity, it is outside of the CA zone. Also, the fact that the user will provide classroom instruction to 20 offenders at any one time classifies this use more as a hybrid correctional facility slash basic training school than a professional office. It is not a reporting center on the basis of they report and lead. Both of these uses, a correctional facility or a basic training schools, are prohibited uses within this zone. Therefore, the commission found that the proposed location of the conditional use was not in accord with either the objectives or the requirements of the Development Code. The second finding, finding B: The proposed location of the conditional use and the conditions under which it will be operated must be consistent with the general plan and will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare, or materially injurious to uses, properties, or improvements in the vicinity. The general plan describes the office professional district as "established to provide for the location of offices for professional services and business activities which involve a relatively low volume of direct contact." The commission found that bringing in additional 40 criminals a day into the Civic Center is contrary to the intent of the general plan. Additionally, the general plan requires compatibility of uses through goals, objectives, and policies, such as protect existing development from intrusion by new incompatible land uses, ensure that the integrity of each land use district is maintained, and ensure that new development is compatible with existing developments and public infrastructure. Existing development provides a wide range of professional services, including governmental and legal services. Much of the current clientele are professional and most are noncriminal. Much of the current clientele are professional, or I'm sorry, the volume of offenders served daily by the facility poses a risk to nonsuspecting citizens and professionals conducting businesses throughout the Civic Center. The potential threat of harm, whether realized or not, can impact professional activity at existing businesses and become a deterrent to new professional prospects. Therefore, the commission found that the proposed location of the conditional use permit and the conditions under which it would be operated was not consistent with the general plan and may be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare or materially injurious to user, uses, properties, or improvements within the vicinity. Additionally, staff was concerned that there was an overconcentration of social services uses occurring. As noted last year at the Joint Council Commission Workshop, there's been a rise in the relocation and expansion and intensification of social service uses within the vicinity. While the county has elected to relocate their professional offices of planning, building, and successor from the Civic Center to their new Hospira Building, it chooses to concentrate the less desirable social services in the vicinity of the Civic Center. The new Palmdale Welfare Building is an example. Civic Child Support Services had expanded, as well as the other two probation slash parole facilities that are existing. Staff questioned the need for all of the probation parole facilities serving the Victor Valley to be located solely within the city of Victorville, and suggests there's an undue concentration of such uses. All the issues cited in the appellant's application for appeal were raised and discussed during the public meeting of the planning commission. In addition, two new issues were raised. During the public hearing, Deputy Chief Prevention Officer for the County of San Bernardino stated that the probation department plans on moving their current location on Civic Drive, which serves an additional 150 clients a day, to the proposed West Sage Building. The CUP request was for only 40 clients per day, not 190. Mr. Ricketts also mentioned that loitering is an issue at the current location and that the county would provide armed guards at the new location due to the potential threat to public safety. This information divulged by Mr. Ricketts during the public hearing and the negative impacts discussed in the staff report compounded the issues, leading the commission to deny the project. The second issue that arose, the 150 clients that are currently visiting the existing Civic Drive location was used by the applicant in an attempt to justify the compatibility of the proposed site, basically saying, "Well, you let it, you let us open two blocks over, why can't we open here?" Well, the fact is, after the meeting, staff researched the Civic site and found that the county failed to inform the city of the probation use. It appears that when the county moved their professional land use offices out a few years back, they moved probation in without notifying the city or applying for the necessary entitlements, such as a certificate of occupancy and a conditional use permit, rendering that use illegal and therefore not a legitimate point of argument. One more issue occurred, just briefly, just relatively lately, as of today, actually. There is an article that I did pass out to the dais, and that is, was online with the Daily Press. It shows the parolees gathered at the parole office currently here in Victorville. I would just like to note a few, a few issues, or a few statements within this article. It states that offenders who violate the terms of their parole may be back on the streets faster than they serve out, faster, as they serve out shortened sentences in county custody under California's prison realignment plan, which some feel will lead to an increased revolving door scenario. Anyone who violates parole would be doing their time in county jail, and it is at halftime, said Jody Miller, spokeswoman for the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department. The maximum sentence would be 180 days, which is immediately cut in half. Another note from the article, it refers to the Public Policy Institute of California, stated in an August 2010, or 2011 report entitled "Rethinking the State-Local Relationship Corrections," that the realignment plan could foster an increase in crime for California communities due to shortened prison time, shortened supervision time, and making it harder for parole violators to be returned to state prison. It is quoted as stating, "Released offenders have a fairly high likelihood of committing additional crimes after release, and putting them back on the streets sooner might speed up that process." And basically, this article and the quotes I took out of it, a response to the comments made that this is coming, we need to do something. Staff and the commission agree we need to do something, just not here at the extent that is proposed. And therefore, staff recommends that the City Council evaluate the merit of this appeal and whether the planning commission erred in its decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions of staff at this time?
Are we going to hear from probation?
Yeah, I do have several cards.
So when we hear from probation, can I ask questions, or only to the staff?
You can ask questions.
Okay.
Bill, you might want to stick by close. First card I have is Diana Carloni.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Diana Carloni. I'm a local attorney. I represent Heidi Hart, the landowner and applicant in this appeal. She owns the 18,980 square foot building that is the proposed project in this appeal. It is located at 15456 West Sage Street. Ms. Hart is seated to my left. She's here tonight, interested in this appeal, and very concerned that she should be judged by prejudicial statements about compliance with AB 109, and not by the reason that we're really here. And that's a land use appeal based upon compliance with your Development Code and your general plan. First of all, I would hope that the applicant would get the same amount of time as the staff in order to present their appeal. Otherwise, I believe that would be a denial of due process in this situation. This matter comes before the council, appealing the decision on the grounds that staff has stated. Your Code Section 16-3.02.050 requires four findings in order to grant a conditional use permit. Only two of those findings have been objected to, based upon compatibility of uses and upon a finding of detriment to the public health, safety, and compliance with general plan objectives. The objective evidence does not support the decision of the planning commission, and we urge that you grant this appeal, reverse the decision of the planning commission, and issue the conditional use permit with sufficient conditions to meet the needs of the city of Victorville. I draw your attention to the seven-page document that I have written that is on your dais. That is our official response in our appeal. We wish to make it a part of the administrative record. First and foremost, the reasons for the appeals are as follows. Compatibility to existing uses. The Victorville Civic Center is an area of public, public buildings and services adjacent to a PC, a CA zone, which is administrative office and professional, and a C1 zoning, which is commercial. Both the CA and the C1 are subsets of commercial zoning. This area is understandably adjacent to the PC zone, because in your PC zone, you have the Victorville City Complex, and you have a courthouse with seven criminal courtrooms, two part-time criminal courtrooms, two civil courtrooms, and three family law courtrooms. And any given day, 3,000 people pass through the doors to the Victorville courts. Those 3,000 people park in the CA district, they wander across the street into the public zone to enter the courthouse. This information is verifiable from the executive officer of the courts and is subject to any member of the public receiving it pursuant to the Freedom of Information Act. I will also tell you that pending, as of December 31st, 2011, there were 9,336 criminal cases. That is only misdemeanors and felonies, does not include traffic infractions or citations. The number is too numerous to count. The CA zone is necessarily adjacent to the county court and city municipal buildings. Existing in the zone with the permission of this city is our additional government services, including the La Hantin Regional Water Quality Board, the United States Department of Agriculture, the San Bernardino County Public Defender Offices, the Mojave Air Quality Management District, and the San Bernardino County Child Support Services. All of these services are open to the public and cannot be restricted to relatively low direct consumer contact, and I direct your attention to that phrase. It's not relatively low direct contact, it's relatively low direct consumer contact, which has a very different meaning than that which was presented by staff. In the area adjacent, in the CA area adjacent to the courthouse, you will find 22 offices belonging to attorneys who practice solely or partially criminal law. Would direct your attention to Exhibit B of the presentation I made, which is an overhead aerial map of the area. There are numbered buildings. Each of those numbered buildings corresponds to the legend that's at the front of the map, and it shows you who was in each building from our most recent drive-by and drive-through the area. I will also have you note that in your legend, building number 33 is not a behavioral health building, it is actually the public defender's office, as I was informed this evening by both probation department and the public defender. In addition to the 22 criminal defense attorney offices, you have eight to 10 offices belonging to attorneys who practice solely in the area of civil law, including my office, four offices for bail bonds services, two offices belonging to private investigator, three offices which are strictly consumer-related and apply to eviction processing and paralegal services, and one office, or shall I say, one facility, that is a DUI and drug offender service that provides testing and gives classes three to five times per week with greater than 20 people attending, because I see them down the street from my office. The balance of the office professional services fall into categories of some financial advisors, engineering, survey, and land use services, commercial real estate and/or insurance, with a small contingency of private therapists or counselors. When viewing the professional uses in the CA zone, they are directly, necessarily, and obviously related to the services at the courthouse. The city of Victorville chose, and we are thankful for them choosing, to be the Justice Center of the High Desert. They selflessly serve, or the city selflessly serves, five communities. These services are necessary to the courthouse. All of the services in the professional zone, I'm sorry, all the services in the office professional zone, as well as the commercial zone that surrounds the professional zone, are all necessary. If you look at your map, you'll see a red marking. The red marking is the CA zone. Outside of the red marking, you'll see items number 38, 39, and 40. Number 38 is the current existing probation center. Number 39 is the office of the district attorney, and number 40 is a criminal defense attorney. It is obvious that all of these services are compatible with, I'm sorry, it is obvious that the need for the probation services in this area adjacent to the courthouse is necessary and essential to the already existing services, as well as serving the PC district, the courthouse, and the surrounding civic area. The second reason for the appeal is the fact that the location of this conditional use is in accord with the objectives and requirements- is in accord with the objectives and requirements of the municipal code, I'm sorry, of the development code, and does not offend the objectives of the general plan. This is not the intrusion of an incompatible or inconsistent business. This is the business that's already existing in the area that complements all the other businesses in the area and is an obvious location so that individuals who are in the criminal justice system can move directly from courthouse to probation and meet their needs. This is an obvious location because of its transit availability and the system that comes through here to be able to provide access to the public, to the public facilities that are around it. In addition, this particular zone reads, "The CA Administrative Professional Offices Zone District is intended to provide for the location of offices for professional services and for business activities which involve a relatively low volume of direct consumer contact and to regulate such development." That's your code section 16-3.10.010B3. Therefore, the zone allows professional services and businesses with a relatively low volume of direct consumer contact. Probation services are professional services, clearly the type of services allowed in the zone and subject to a CUP because it is a government-offered service. Business activities which involve a relatively low volume of direct consumer services are identified in your own development code under section 16-3.07.010. These are businesses like dry cleaning establishments, pharmacies, beauty salons, financial institutions, of which there are none in the zone, photography studios, tailors, and restaurants subject to a conditional use permit. Professional services by their very nature are limited or restricted contact because a person has to have, has to have the need for the service to go to the professional service office. Consumer-related activities are those open to the consuming public. The finding based upon the volume of contact or the fact that the clients of the professional probation services are somehow too numerous is incorrect under your own code section. The third grounds for appeal is the allegation by, by planning staff that the courses conducted by the proposed project are prohibited use in the zone. This is not supported because such classes already exist within the district. I have already described to you the services of Jackson Bibby, the DUI and drug offender classes, the drug testing and DUI testing that takes place there. The zone by its own defined uses permits libraries, museums, hospitals, medical and dental offices, as well as business-type college courses if pursuant to a conditional use permit. All of those uses conduct seminars, meetings, and gatherings of members of the, of the public for special training, education, or information. The uses in the district allow these limited type of classes and public informational support, call them conferences, 20 people in a conference room. My own office holds 20 people in a conference room if I have a large deposition. This type of small gathering to provide limited services is not incompatible with the district's use. Finally, the staff finding that this particular use is detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare, or injurious to the surrounding businesses is just simply not supported. We have 3,000 people a day, including criminals going to court. They park outside my office. Some of them get towed if they park in the wrong place. These are people who need public services. They're in the CA zone. They're parking there. They're walking across. They come back. They come to attorneys. They come to child support. They come to probation. They come to all the various uses that exist in this district. In addition, we have Victorville Police within minutes. We have CHP. We have probation officers, and we have court services at the courthouse, all comprised of peace officers. I don't, we've never had a problem with theft in our area, injury to our property. And we have now and again a person who may try to use a side of our building as a bathroom, but other than that, we don't have that kind of problem. This office is going to be open during regular business hours. You have a plethora of people present. You have professional services being given. You have law enforcement just about on every side of the zone itself. There is not a threat to the safety or the protection of property during normal business hours. We're all there. We see it every day. These people flow in and out. It is not a problem or an issue for this particular service to be added to an area where there's a huge need. 9,000 criminal cases is not something to sneeze at. It is not the case of, oh, 8,000 of them come from the jails because they're in custody. That is not the case. The cases, the people here require the services of the courthouse. When they go through the criminal justice system, they're entitled to be rehabilitated. They're entitled to get services that the normal public can get at other social service offices within the city of Victorville. We are thankful the city of Victorville has become the justice center. We are thankful the city of Victorville offers the services that are necessary to meet the needs of the individuals in both the civil and the criminal justice system. This is the perfect location for this project. It needs to be here. You have an empty building that can adequately house the services, that can keep people off the streets and in a reception area, that can be conditioned to meet the fears that seem to be expressed from city staff, and we urge you to grant this appeal. At the close of the hearing, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to respond to them.
Carloni, I just wanted to make sure that you realize you had way more time than our city staff.
I am most grateful. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. But I'd ask that the following folks that I'm going to call forward, if they're going to say anything that reflects the same sentiments that the attorney for the applicant has provided, that we not repeat ourselves so that we can get to deliberation. Ricketts Adilio?
Good evening, Mayor McCurn and council members. My name is William Ricketts and Deputy Chief Probation Officer, and I'm here representing Chief Michelle Gray and Assistant Chief Sandra Pizzi and all of the, the hard-working staff and probation officer support staff that work in the desert and that work today diligently to protect the community and to rehabilitate the offender. We have been located in the 15505 Civic Drive Building for over two decades, and we have always been a part of the community, and our goal has always been to reduce recidivism. I assure you, very much, very much aware, the governor signed a bill, AB 109, in this year, this past year, and transfer the responsibility of supervising the post-release community supervision offenders and triple non-offenders to the probation department. The department was selected as the agency that is responsible not only for supervising the, this population, but also to improve their lives through evidence-based practices. And by doing that, we are concentrating on reducing the high rate of recidivism that those parolees have, we feel they will transfer to the probation department. We anticipate that by 2014, the city of Victorville will have approximately 1,500 new, uh, post-release community supervision offenders in the city. These folks are the same population that parole was supervising prior to AB 109. So it's not a new number. To accommodate the additional future population, the probation department found the Sage Building. It was an excellent building. It's going to help us to accommodate our staff, which now is very crowded at the Civic Drive location, and also is going to provide the parking, and it's also going to give us the opportunity to provide the supervision that is needed and also the treatment services that the clients deserve for their rehabilitation. Just to address a few issues that were brought up in the, in the report, and I need to make some corrections and some clarification. The probation department has always planned to consolidate the two buildings. We are not talking about an additional building. We are going to consolidate the Civic Drive Building with the Sage Building, and that's, that's a fact, and that's what I expressed at the, at the commission meeting. Number two, the report indicated, the, the staff report indicated that the, there was going to be later in the Civic Center Drive. I never said that. What I said was that if, if the city council did not approve the new building, Sage, that we will add 1,500 new clients coming to the Civic Drive Address, potentially you could have people standing outside because the lobby area is not large enough to accommodate that number, or people coming to see their probation officer, or children coming to see their probation officer. Number three, the, the report also indicated that we were adding armed guards to protect the community. That is further from the truth. The fact is that the reason why we wanted to add armed guards is to not only protect the, the clients who are sitting in the lobby, but also the staff. We have all, the officers who are supervising these clients are all armed, as the, the attorney mentioned earlier. We have armed officers in the entire building, so it's not, that's not the issue. We wanted to make sure that the, the lobby is safe for everybody who's there. As Ms. Carloni has said, a number of service agencies and criminal law agencies are adjacent to, to the Sage Building, and they are serving the same population that we see every day. These offenders could be visiting the courthouse, they could be visiting the probation officer, and so what we want to do is that the, right now, the Civic Address sees approximately 115 people a day. Those are juvenile offenders, those are adult offenders, and approximately so far, it's been something like 15 of the post-release community supervision. We anticipate that number is going to go up once these folks get out of prison, and we have more of them, but so far, it's been an insignificant number. It hasn't had that much of an impact. I'm proud to say that the probation department has always done a very good job of recidivism. We have gone from a very high recidivism one day, at one time, we're down to 19% in the entire county compared to the state's 67.5%. The question we've been answering this time is, what are we going to do? How are we going to deal with this population? I think the answer right now is that we need, as I mentioned before, evidence-based practices, jobs, vocational training, education, treatment services, and all of those services are going to be provided at the day reporting center. Now, there's been some question about, we're going to have all these people hanging around the building. That's not true. Probation officers by and large see their clients in the community. We go to their homes. We go to their jobs, and every once in a while, they have to come and see their probation officer. That's true, but it's not a large amount of people in the lobby waiting for their probation officers. That's not the case. I'm requesting that we continue to partner with the probation department. We've been there a long time, over 20 years. Why shouldn't we be the model to show the, the other folks in the state how it's supposed to be done? How do we rehabilitate the clients? How do we can, we can reduce recidivism? And I think that should be the goal. We're ready to go to work. We need a building to be able to provide the services. We have a mandate by the state to do so, and we're going to do it, one way or the other. We have, we have the resources and the support of many community and, and community agencies that are present today, and they're willing to help us change the, the criminal behavior of those interested in changing their lives, and at the same time, protecting the community and public safety. Before I go, I want you, I want you to know that the, the audience, we have community-based organizations, we have faith-based community organizations, we have county agencies, public defender is here, and so many other agencies are here to support us, and they're committed to help us improve the lives, lives of these offenders, and also to improving, as I mentioned before, the public safety of our community. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Any... I believe Ms. Vias may have some questions. You said you wanted to ask the probation department some questions.
If we could wait until all of the attorneys have spoken, I should have known that I couldn't limit any of you to three minutes. That's just impossible. You must be thinking you're before a judge, but I'd like the public comment to can, can continue, and then once all the cards have been, everyone's been called up, then we will have questions.
I'll be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Phyllis Morris?
My name is Phyllis Morris, and I'm currently serving as the interim public defender for San Bernardino County. My personal office is located in San Bernardino, but we do have two public defender offices up here in the High Desert. I would also like to say that I am a resident of the High Desert, and I grew up in the city of Victorville. I believe in rehabilitation. I have been involved with the public defender's office now for 28 years. I believe that the best rehabilitation is one that can take place in the, in the community, and that's why I personally am thankful for AB 109. I am somewhat puzzled and confused that it appears that the planning commission's denial is based on a political ground instead of based on social justice ground and in what the code specifies in terms of uses for this particular area. The public defender's first office is located at the courthouse. Our second office is on Cajon, 14344 Cajon Street, which is across the street from the Sage location where probation would like to locate their day reporting center. What's important for you to understand is that probation serves the same clientele as the public defender's office, and additionally, AB 109 has actually expanded the obligations and responsibilities of the public defender's office, because we not only represent the clients in the courtroom, we represent the clients at probation revocation hearings, we represent the client at post-community release supervision hearings, and we will soon represent parolees, because there's still a segment of the population that will continue to do their time in state prison, that will continue to be incarcerated in state prison, and under AB 109, the public defender's office will pick up those parole services. I don't remember how long we have been at the Cajon location, but I don't recall us ever having an issue with any client at the Cajon location. For the most part, the large segment of our population are respectful citizens. They are individuals who have problems, and it's important for us to deal with the root of the problem. Incarceration is merely treating a symptom. It's time for us to move beyond treating symptoms to treating the problem, and a community is in the best situation to treat the problem, because you have to understand that we're not talking about dumping clients in a particular area. We're talking about providing rehabilitation to our citizens. It's important for you to remember that these clients live up here in the High Desert. They're not coming from the outside, migrating into the High Desert, and it's important for us to provide services for our clients up here in the High Desert, and their families live up here in the High Desert, and it's important for you to provide services because through the provision of services, we build stronger and better families. When you rehabilitate, you are actually enhancing public safety. When you rehabilitate, you are actually building community safety, community responsibility. It is time for the community to become involved in the lives of citizens, and AB 109 provides that opportunity. The services of probation is not incompatible with the area, which is a law and justice center. It is highly compatible, and our clients have been respectful. So I ask you to reconsider the appeal and to allow probation to proceed with rehabilitation, because this is what this community need. We needed it yesterday. Let us get going. Thank you.
I'm a local Realtor. I've been a Realtor in this particular area for eight years. I've been a resident here for 16 years. I've had the occasion to use the planning department with the probation department attached to the planning department, go in and out and see the people waiting in the probation department with all their problems, being tended to by dedicated staff in the probation department. I never had a problem, and I can't see why you could be against private property rights, individual freedom, and the rehabilitation of your own citizens. It just doesn't make sense. That's it.
Jeffrey Isler, 10284 Willow Wells. I'm here representing Jesus Christ Prison Ministry. I'm here representing Jesus Christ Prison Ministry for the parole inflation situation. I just would pose a question for you. As the staff pointed out to you that you are going to have a lot of inmates who are being released from prison, and they're going to be in this area. The question I would pose to you is, are you going to help the situation, or are you going to compound it by not providing the services? They need a place to be. Wouldn't you rather be able to keep track of them versus to not keeping track of them? That would be the question I would ask. If you keep track of them, then you know what's going on. They're reporting to parole. If they're here and nobody knows where they're at, then we have a real problem, because then nobody's supervising. That's all I would ask.
Okay, that's all the cards I have, and I know we will probably have some questions from council members, but before we get into that, I would like to ask our city attorney, it's been a while since we've had an appeal hearing, could you give us some guidelines as to what we're looking at here, what we can and cannot do, some history as to what we've done in the past?
Certainly. Typically, in appellate proceeding, you review the record that was before the planning commission and make a determination whether or not the planning commission was justified in coming to its decision. You look for things such as if there was an abuse of discretion, if there was some kind of error in connection with the proceedings. However, here, you have essentially the ability to have a trial de novo. You are able to consider all of the testimony, the new testimony, if there's new evidence. You can amend the planning commission's decision, you can modify it, you can reverse it, you can sustain it. So you have the option here in the past, the tradition has been to defer to the planning commission on these types of issues, that's what they're tasked to do, and unless there is a, some straightforward error or an abuse of discretion on the record in the past, the city council has traditionally gone and used its discretion aside with the planning commission. Again, you don't have to follow that guideline at this point, you have the ability to weigh the evidence anew and make any decision you'd like, affirm, amend, modify, or sustain.
All right. With that, I'll open it up to questions from council members.
This question is actually for our attorney. I understand what you stated with the guidelines here tonight. I wasn't on the council when they rezoned Walmart, so why, why would it be okay to rezone one area and not another?
Well, the zoning has gone through a long public hearing process. I don't know how long ago that happened, Bill.
Clarification, it has not been rezoned. That is still to come before the council.
Did the planning commission pass that?
The planning commission recommended to council. It has not yet come to council. The council has the final action. As you stated, yes, it goes through the public hearing process. It is coming to council expectedly within a few months.
Okay, so, so why would they, let me rephrase this, why would they recommend rezoning in the Walmart case, but not recommend rezoning in the probation case?
They found that the shopping center is not an incompatible use, and that this use is an incompatible use with administrative professional offices. And the actual answer is, we weren't, the question wasn't for rezoning. The question was to permit 40 parolees to come and train in a center, 20 at a time throughout the day, and changed up the commission to, up to 190 if they combined both their offices, which is currently assisting 150. So it was completely different issues, and I'm not saying one's right or wrong or the other as far as their decision goes, or what your decision will be with Walmart or tonight, but, but I see the likeness. They are compatibility issues, both of them, but they're different scenarios on different-sized parcels that are integrated, this is more integrated in with the neighbors, whereas that is fairly separated, I guess, from a land use perspective, I would say. So there are some differences in the configuration of land and the type of uses surrounding them, and that's, that's the best I can give you. But the zone, the actual zoning has not come before the council yet, and that'll be at your discretion, probably, I'm told, within the next two months.
Did I hear correctly that there are ready holding classes there, 20-plus?
At the Civic Center location, which is a different zone, like a block and a half or so, right direction down Civic Drive.
And so, the probation department is incompatible because of traffic issues?
No. It's incompatible with administrative offices, and the interpretation of the, of the commission is administrative offices, such as even attorneys, may have one parolee at a time coming and going and using their services in a professional manner in an office setting. This was set up more as, you know, having groups come for counseling and training, and that's why we couldn't necessarily classify it as either or, and that's why it's likened more to a trade school, which is not permitted here. When it was stated that there's a professional-type schooling, yes, that's to groom those that will then move into offices and take up residence here in the Civic Center. This clientele is not, is not necessarily, they may, but that's not necessarily the level of the training as far as a, I don't know, college degree or professional administrative training.
So this building is empty, did I hear correctly?
Yes. The city has been, has been empty since I believe, is this the same building that had the land use services? Yes. Since the county moved their professional land use services to the new Hospira building, it has been empty, so it's been a few years, I'm guessing, at least, longer?
You know, I guess my concern is, is that we have, we have an empty building, and I think somewhere on, on this agenda, we have where we want to somehow reduce permitting fees so that we can increase business in Victorville. We have the probation department who's going to bring on 80 sworn peace officers to this location, that's going to provide jobs in Victorville, retail sales tax, because they're going to shop here, they're going to eat here, they're going to provide armed security. And I, and I think that it is, that it is correct. We do have the criminals already here at the courthouse. Victorville, I'm, you know, many years ago, built the courthouse here, and, you know, they should have zoned it so that all these services can be around it. It, it only makes sense, rather than, you know, having to cross town for the probation officers to, to go back and forth, it just doesn't seem feasible, especially in this economy. And then, I know that there were some attorneys complaining, and I heard through the grapevine that some of the judges didn't want that, but, but to me, I mean, isn't this what they base their living off of? So it's just contradictory that they don't want it here, even though that's what they do for a living. And as far as the Walmart thing, personally, I think that we rezoned, this council, the planning commission recommended rezoning for Walmart, because it brings in money to the city of Victorville, but we have to look at it, is, we're rehabilitating, and a 9% recidivism rate is just, is just remarkable. I come from a state institution, I was a prison warden, and they're right, it was 67% in the state, and if we can keep our self-help classes and our criminals, I mean, who do you want to live next to? They're going to be released. Do you want to live next to, next to somebody who's been rehabilitated and offered self-help classes, or just been suppressed and thrown out of the system, and probably still has their issues, and they're not dealing with it? So it only makes sense to me that the, that the council should consider all of that, because the criminals are here, whether we like it or not, and we were given a horrible situation with this realignment, but it is what it is, and we have to deal with it the best that we can.
I have a question.
Ready?
The, I understand the existing, the existing building is outside the zone, and the, the building they want to locate you is within that zone, that special zone, but within that zone, we also have the DMV, not the DMV, the DUI training, how do they?
And without, without being able, without the time to research all of the statements that were made, I'd rather not respond to them. I don't know, other than in general, without, because I don't want to dispute what was said, I don't know. I can tell you that some uses are pre-existing, and they existed before the uses changed. Some, like their current place, might be operating other than what they have on their business license and that they have permits for, and then others may have been permitted through the same CUP process that they applied through, and was at the discretion of the commission, and was found to be not as incompatible. So it could be any of those, any of those issues that could have aroused on each of those cases that were mentioned.
Well, we just, we just received this information, you know, before we, we came to the meeting.
Right.
So...
And I'm, I'm saying the likelihood of the responses are not going to be that, well, let me just say it this way, the commission did not permit a similar use like this anywhere else in this zone, and that much I can say. So if there's something to a lesser degree that was permitted, that could have been, but it would have been to perhaps a lesser degree of either people coming, or, or the safety issue, or something of that sort. But it wasn't to the same degree as this use. Also, some of those uses may have been pre-existing, and some of those uses may be operating without any knowledge, and unless staff can do a door-to-door survey and find out and pull all the records, which then we would come forward with more issues.
Yeah. Let me get started by, sit down, Bill. First of all, my decision is based on land use, it's not on programs. The probation department is an extraordinarily important aspect of our community, there is no doubt about it. I mean, every individual that you can save out of the recidivism is a benefit to us in a multitude of ways. That isn't even a question in my mind, but we have a 5-0 planning commission decision, and all due respect to fellows who sat on the planning commission, I disagree with any concept that that's a political decision at all. That was a very analytical decision made by that board. You had a group of folks in here from Walmart, just as big a group, that wanted a decision that was different. That same night, they came up with two different decisions with a group of folks from each side of it, so to say that they were influenced in one decision and not in another is to do disservice to that planning commission. They were there analytically, doing their thing, and to the best of my knowledge, none of us on this council have influenced them on their decisions. That was their decisions. Certainly, I had none from my planning commissioner. So your program is excellent, it really is, and, and I compliment you on that, but we've got a business department, area of this community here that we're developing. We have CUPs, because we make special conditions with special impacts, but you can't look at a program and say, well, this is good for us, and you ought to help us implement it. That's why we have a planning commission, a city council, and others have zoning and planning ordinances, so that we can spread our services and impacts around the community. You don't put all five grocery stores in the same block, or movie theaters, or anything else. You spread services around. Hospira's has got a great facility there. I'm not suggesting that you haven't or shouldn't go there, but I'm simply saying that we've got 400,000 people in the Victor Valley, growing to a million over the next 15 years, probably, with the Desire Express and all that coming. So that million folks, those services are going to be spread around. We have a court that came in here long before, well, not long before, but slightly before, we actually implemented the business plan model for that area. So yes, we do have, and I'm grateful that we have the courts here, and we have a lot of attorney's offices here too. That doesn't mean that we need all of the services and all of the impact from that facility embedded in one specific spot within the Victor Valley. So I, I fall back on looking at what the planning commission did when it made its decisions. It was looking at the impact within the community, is looking at the potential for future growth in there, and the consideration of the other businesses that have nothing to do with the legal system there, that want to be there and will be there. I don't think we have 50% of that built out yet. I don't know, maybe I should have looked at Diane's map a little bit closer, but the fact is that there's a lot of growth and potential there, and we're going to have to master plan that out, and I don't want to make any precipitous things or say, well, you've allowed an expanded development of this type of program in here, now we don't have room for the other types. I'm not going to do that. We have a 5-0 decision from this planning commission, and with all due respect to your services, which I admire, and I am grateful that they're there, I will stand by the planning commission's decisions at this time, and if we have a change in that, that, it has to be screened back through that commission first. That's a very technical decision, that is not a political decision, and so I'm comfortable with where we're at on it. It was a denial of expanded services in there, and hopefully we can find another spot within the city other than there, but my vote is not to approve the appeal.
If you, if you might, I'd like to address this issue. The other council members have had an opportunity, and I would like to ask one question and make a suggestion. The question to you, Mr. Webb, is, the issue of consolidation came up, and apparently there's some misconception or misinformation as to whether or not that that was actually properly presented to the planning commission at the time. My understanding is that they were going to keep both the existing facility open and open up this new facility. Could you clarify that for the council as to what exactly they were proposing to do?
The request from the applicant was for 40, for 40 probationers coming in at a time, or, or per week, or per day, I'm sorry, and that was it. And the staff report was written as such, and we went to the commission, and at the commission, the probation officers, as they stated tonight, clarified and said, no, we want to combine. We're not going to have two offices, we're going to move the, the current one over to the new location. The current one, we were told, and that's what we have the stats from them, in our staff report, we're seeing 150 per day. So at that point, it was 150 here, 40, we had an application for the new one, so it could be up to 190 per day. Whether it's 190, 40, or 50, the commission said, it's not a compatible use. So was the information presented in the staff report? No. How rightful, competent, that it was discussed at length by the commission with the understanding that both buildings would be joined at the new location, and that they would all be combined there, and so it would be a higher use than the staff report actually reported.
Okay, but regardless, what was presented to the planning commission is not what you just told me?
Yes.
Regardless of what they discussed that night? Is that correct?
And what do you mean presented? It was presented at the meeting.
As far as the staff report was considered, there was going to be the two locations?
The staff report reported it as such. However, at the hearing, it was discussed with staff and the commission, before staff and commission, about the fact that they would be joined. The commission voted with the knowledge and understanding that they would be joined into one location. The commission took the information from the applicant, accepted that with a nod from staff that, yes. Now they're saying they're going to combine it, so that is their, their current request, and they acted upon that, the combination of the two offices.
Okay. Based upon that, as well as the fact that we received, and the council only received this here tonight, will you concur?
Yes. We asked for the staff report online last Friday, so we did our best over the weekend. Second time we have not been provided with a timely staff report.
Okay, well, it's public on Thursday to everyone, so...
And the notices did, and I will state for the record that the notices did go out to the applicants, and in the city, in the city council notices, the agenda is sent to them, and there's direction to where to find it online.
All right, here's my suggestion then. One, I have to agree with Councilman Rothschild. There are a lot of attorneys sitting here in the audience today. You all understand procedure, and procedure would indicate that we must rely upon our planning commission, and for us not to would basically indicate that we have no use for a planning commission. Why don't we just make our land use decisions? The fact that we just received this here tonight, regardless of the reason for it, there is no way that anyone on this council has had adequate time to absorb or even understand what's in this documentation, or the arguments, even though they've been spelled out before us here tonight. I think that the fact that staff has not been given an opportunity to respond to this, nor has the planning commission seen this, requires that the council send it back to the planning commission. The planning commission needs to understand this documentation. They may come to the same conclusion, it may ultimately end up right back in our hands, but at the end of the day, for us to just tell the planning commission, who voted 5-0 against this, that you're wrong, makes absolutely no sense. We have to do, we have to follow the proper... We have to do, we have to follow the proper procedures. I think it's advisable that the planning commission be given the opportunity to look at this again. I think the planning commission needs to make their decision based upon a staff report, which includes consolidation, regardless of whether or not it was discussed there that night. That was not a part of the staff report that was provided to this council, even though it may have been discussed there that night. Again, there was this idea that there would be the two facilities, and I, I think that that issue still needs to be flushed out and clarified, not only for the planning commission, but ultimately if it does come back here to this council. I, this, the city council has rarely ever overturned its planning commission, and I doubt it's ever done it on a 5-0 vote. So to, there's no reason for a planning commission if we're going to be doing that. So I think that the best course of action, to follow the proper procedure, give the applicant their, their day, and allow for this process to move forward, is that we refer it back to planning commission. Because this is, this is information that the council has not had a chance to absorb, staff has not had a chance to absorb, and planning commission never saw. This, did you provide this to planning commission? This says February 20th, so I doubt the planning commission ever saw this memo. Yes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, the applicant indicated that the report was received by her on Saturday. The planning commission did not see that, but I also urge you all to listen to the planning commission and the 10-minute hearing of "I Don't Want Criminals in My Neighborhood." That's all that it said. Okay? And I will make this part of the record, because you can take your planning decision 5-0, but at the planning, you have to determine whether or not the planning commission has exercised an abusive discretion, or did not properly exercise their discretion. But I urge you to listen to the report on this particular one. I would agree, I would agree with Mayor McEckern that this should go back to the planning commission. And the applicant will accept that if that is the decision of this board tonight. Because what has to happen is land use issues have to be determined by the planning commission, not emotional statements about criminals and services. We have to look at the land use. We have a viable 18,980 square foot building. It has a potential use that's compatible with the area from the applicant's perspective. We want the planning commission to make a fully informed decision. I would concur with the mayor. I would urge, if that's the council's pleasure, we do that. The applicant is willing to accept that if it's the council's pleasure. If not, we would stand by our request that this decision be overturned, because you do have the power to overturn that decision if you find that that land use is compatible. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would, I would agree with Mayor McEckern, and because the position paper that was submitted tonight has two rebuttals to, to the, to the staff's findings, and I think, you know, it's very significant that we, that we really find out how the planning commission, when they get this information, how they respond to this.
Just, just to comment, I, I don't know what your, your intent were when you said some people stood up there and complained about the criminals. Everybody stands up there and complains about criminals in some aspect. They complained about it to the Walmart. It has no relevancy to the decision-making. I'm not offering a rebuttal. I'm, I'm saying, you've had your turn, and I'm, I'm making my comment. I'm really upset that you're politicizing and putting words into a planning commission, and you have no right to do that. You don't know what decisions they made. And I had, I stood back there and listened to the whole report. I was in the back of the room when they made it. So I've seen all the people that came up and everything else. So that recording means nothing to me. And it means nothing to the planning commission, because you don't know that they made any decisions based on those people's comments.
The comments were made by the planners, and I stick, I will gladly submit this so that you all may listen to it, if you would like. We make it part of the record. I'll give it to the clerk right now.
Appreciate that. And we do have, by the way, as a part of our agenda, the entire minutes of that meeting. So all that information has been provided. Well, I would disagree, but they do. And, and again, you know, I'm speaking to a roomful of attorneys here. You all know what it, what goes into making arguments for and against, what judges have to deal with. This is procedural. This is an issue where we received information that was not provided to the planning commission, rebuttals to issues that were provided at the planning commission hearing. And in essence, we received them, it's dated February 20th. The planning commission has a right to see those issues, those arguments, and determine whether or not they need to reverse their decision. Ultimately, it may end up right back here, but I, I think if it's the council's pleasure, that we ought to refer it back to the planning commission. All right. Well, then that'll be my motion, that we refer this back to the planning commission with all the documentation that was provided here tonight, as well as give staff the opportunity to address those issues.
Motion by Mayor McEckern, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy absent.
All right. Thank you. And we'll make sure, can we make sure that the applicant, the representatives, and anybody that's here gets notification of when that planning commission hearing will be? Will it be in April?
We have that. Before I don't know how we ask to clarify any statements made tonight.
Okay. All right. We'll make sure that everyone that wishes to be notified regarding that hearing will have information regarding that. All right. We'll now move on. Agenda item number nine under the Victor Water District is the consent calendar.
Didn't we do that?
Oh, I'm sorry. We already did that.
Item number 11.
Item number 11, consent calendar under city council. And I do have a card on this. Mr. Mueller?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name's Dave Mueller. I'm with HighDesertPolitics.org. I believe this is 11A that I'm speaking on. I've sent public records requests for the following information. I'd like to know what the check was written for, for $216,065 for water deliveries to the High Desert Power Plant. And isn't that water supposed to be coming from the fully functioning industrial wastewater treatment plant? Because I thought when you built the wastewater treatment plant that's fully functioning, that you both ensured me that it's fully functioning, that that water would be supplied by the industrial wastewater treatment plant. And instead, you, you committed $216,000 to buy water. So I'd like to know how much water was purchased for that amount of money. Next question is, I also submitted a request on Noble America's Energy Solutions, which there's a check written for $312,712.52. What specifically did that pay for if the citywide electricity bill, there was a check written to SCE for $93,800? What are the taxpayers paying for if that $312,000 is going to Noble America's Energy Solutions? The third issue is Sagebrush Properties was paid $132,305.72 for what is described as the fifth and final payment for Nutro, which Nutro is the dog food plant. And I know there was a lawsuit brought, which the Spring Valley Lake residents lost. So what are the, what are the payments for? It's five payments. So I'm asking for the total amount paid and, of those five payments, and what it was for. Because if it was for remediation, wouldn't Nutro pay for that? Why is the city paying for that? And I happen to know that there was remediation done, because I know some of the folks that were in the construction field that put it on the plant. So I'd just like some answers. I go through your checks, because your checks tell the story. Because that's, there's two ways that money leaves a place. My, my father told me, money goes out through the front door, but you've got to watch the back door, too. So I'm just asking for clarifications on these. And it's interesting to me that you'd be paying money for things that, to me, don't make sense, like your power bill. Thank you.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Pro Tim Cabralis. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 12 is request to approve amendment number three to the annual agreement with Butzko Utility Design, Inc., increasing annual compensation by $45,000 to an amount not to exceed $95,000. Well, 11 was all the consent calendar. Weren't you going to address C at the same time?
No.
Well, we've already approved the consent calendar, but come back up. I would have expected that you would have addressed us at the same time. It's all under one item when it's consent.
Why is 11A, B, and C then?
It's all consent. We approve all items at the same time.
Excuse me, then. I'm sorry. Appreciate the time, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to comment on the minutes. Agenda items six, eight, and 10. What the minutes say, I said, is Dave Mueller, High Desert Politics, had comments, Valazin Kennedy did too. Metzler, DeBortnowsky replied in kind. Can you tell me what we discussed from those minutes? Agenda item eight, same thing written. I had comments. Agenda item 10, I had comments. McGlade and DeBortnowsky replied. I've been told that this is called action minutes. In the town of Apple Valley, they do the same thing. The same thing as your clerk does here. I call what you are doing a form of censorship. What, what did I say under that agenda item, under agenda item 10? If you read your minutes back to me, if you can read your minutes back to me, you're going to get, "I made comments." So you can't tell me what I said under agenda 10. And neither can anybody that reads these minutes. They have to go to the tape and watch the whole meeting, or, or jump to that specific item. Which I, I'd say it's censorship. You shouldn't be doing that. What I did say in summary is that the IWWTP, the, the treatment plant, is not functioning correctly. And I reminded the council that this newest repair first came up at the October 18th, 2011 council meeting, to which this council said that the new wastewater treatment plant is functioning properly. Why this matters is it, it shows a pattern of this council intentionally misrepresenting information that's presented by people that come to speak to you. And tonight, you said it's functioning, but tonight you wrote a check to the Mojave Water Agency to purchase water to cool those turbines. It's not functioning correctly, or you'd be using reclaimed water from that treatment I'd like to know, if you spent $48 million on that plant, and you're using state water project water to cool the turbines, that's our drinking water, isn't it? And I think Mr. DeBortnowsky knows where I'm going with this. Thank you very much.
Agenda item number 12 is before us. I've already read it.
Motion by Councilmember Rothschild, second by Councilmember Kennedy.
I have a question.
Mr. McGlade, if you could make your way to the podium.
For this additional appropriation, why don't we go out to RFP for this? Or did we?
This is a, a third amendment to an agreement with Butzko for engineering services. The city council exercised its right to extend for, it was a total of three years. This is additional services that we feel the need, needs to be added onto this contract. At the end of three years, we will certainly give consideration to an RFP process to take a look and see if we have, you know, better consultants out there.
Okay. Thank you.
Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 13 is request to approve an additional appropriation in the amount of $50,000 to construct curb and gutter along the south side of Seneca Road between Borrego and McGart Roads.
I have a question about this one, too. I, I don't see who the contractor was, and if there was an RFP, or did we go out to bid for it? I did read that our Public Works was, was going to do some of the work, but how do you know how much it's going to cost if we don't have a bid?
We don't know exact costs at this stage. This is an appropriation based upon our estimate. It's the intent that we do as much of that work as possible. However, we believe that the amount of work that a contractor would be doing would be below the threshold for a formal bid process. But we would certainly get bids in informal process.
Why, why wouldn't we have, before we authorize this, why wouldn't we have bids?
It's kind of like the cart before the horse. We really need your approval for the appropriation of funds before we would want to ask contractors for competitive bids.
I see. But you, you are going to get bids and come back?
We may not need to come back if it's under $25,000. That's within the city manager's authority, as long as we have three bids. That's in the procurement ordinance.
Okay.
Sean, is this a project that the city could perform on its own, you're being a charter city now?
Yeah. The, the, the work of putting in the curb and gutter is a little bit more specialized than city staff is comfortable with. We would like to get a professional contractor. If you like, the grade is so flat out there that there's no room for error. We really need to, to have a good concrete contractor to install the curb and gutter.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Cabralis, second by Councilmember Rothschild. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 14 is request to approve an additional appropriation in the amount of $82,040 for TDA Article III bus stop accessibility improvement projects to be reimbursed by the Victor Valley Transit Authority, VBT-A, upon completion.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Pro Tim Cabralis. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 15 is request to provide direction to staff to pursue the possibility of instituting on-street parking and reducing the speed limit in Old Town. I do have a card on this. Sharon Foster, if you should address the council.
Mr. Mayor, councilmen, and staff, and concerned citizens are still left. I was hoping that I could address you this evening in more of an open comment. So most of the items that I have are really related to mostly Old Town. Again, I'm Sharon Foster. I'm a volunteer at the Route 66 Museum. I volunteer over 20 hours a week, so I kind of live downtown. And a couple of the items that I'd like to address is, I think the city could help us with our cleaning up of the Old Town. We have things in, in force right now, or resources in force. I'd like to see that we adhere to our code enforcement, look at the paint, the paints jobs that are being used, or the paints that are being used. Look at the trash that is being collected, that I think code enforcement is careful with. One of the other items that I'd like to bring to your attention is, when we built the transportation center, we dedicated a small portion of that center as a police presence. And it was my understanding, and I'm kind of new, but it was my understanding that policemen would go in at the end of the day, do their reporting, and have a presence in Old Town. I'd like to see that re-instituted. I think that that would help. I think that that would help if we had these police cars going up and down the street, no set pattern, anything on that order, but just at random, visiting our city, the backbone of our city, I should say. I think that that would also help Old Town. I'm going to speak a little bit in regard to Route 66 Museum. We're on D Street, and we don't have what I consider what the problems that the heartland of Old Town have. But we do have visitors coming through our area, about 10,000. And again, that's in a year. We're a small museum, but we are an attraction. Over the course of this last year, we have been asked by several people in the area if we could put cars in our museum. We're at capacity. So one of the thoughts that we had was, we have a transportation center across the street, and I know that it probably has restricted uses, but wouldn't it be nice to have two visitor centers across the street from each other? One, again, giving history about Route 66, the other one would be transportation or cars, old classic cars. We could help staff that, and I think that that would also help. Within two more blocks of that area, we have a fire department museum, and we have the old USO building across the street from that. We can be a driving force to be a visitor area for Old Town, and I think that that would be the catalyst that we could build on to make Old Town maybe a Temecula, a Glendora, whatever. We need to go find out what they did to make it look really great. The other item that I have basically is, I know that we have three arteries going east-west in the High Desert. Highway 18 is one of those. And just within the last week or so, we've had a death on 18 because of the speed, and everybody's trying to make it through those signals that we all hate. Over the course of Monday, we almost had another fatality. Somebody almost got hit. I think that if we could bring a presence of commercial entities that would catch our eye, slow traffic down, maybe bring some of the money into the area that we need. When I was here last month, we gave you a schedule that had been done by Rutgers University, and at that time, they indicated that there was $127 million of revenue generated along the Route 66 corridor. That's 2,448 miles. I'd like to see Victorville grow, and let's get some of this presence, let's get these visitors. Right now, Route 66 Museum, when we have a visitor come in the facility, we ask if they're traveling the route, where do they come from, where are they going, which way are they going to leave? If it's lunchtime, we send them to a couple places for lunch, or suggest a couple places for lunch. If it is late in the afternoon, we suggest areas of hotels or motels within the area. We, at the museum, we at Old Town, would like to make Victorville a destination. I'm tired of Victorville being a biological rest stop. Please help us.
Thank you. Well, obviously, this is just a request for staff to bring back something for the council to consider, so there's not really anything for us to look at here tonight, and I'm just looking if there's support from the council that we look at this possibility. And perhaps we can include Highway 18 and D Street, but obviously, that would involve Caltrans, and I would defer to Councilman Rothschild as to how likely that would be to get them involved in this. But I know you've had your issues over the years with Caltrans, but I think it's worth looking at. I just, I would want to know what the council's pleasure is on this.
It's one of those things that, you know, obviously, Sean could tell us, but it's one of those things we could probably, if it could be done, it could be done with relatively low cost, I believe. You know, and the staff will bring that back to us.
I think that's the point, so if we could entertain a motion to have staff bring that back to us.
Motion by Councilmember Vias, second by Mayor Protem Cabralis.
Did I also hear an idea of sticking an old car over in the center over there? Is there some way to drive the car inside, or would that be an outside display? You haven't heard?
Yes.
You can get a car in there?
Yes.
I couldn't remember on top of my head whether those doors were that big or not. Yeah. I've been over there a lot of times, maybe not lately, but I've been there lots. Okay.
Agenda item number 16, this is request to authorize a survey of the cost of legal services that are provided to other cities of similar size that have the same functionality and responsibilities as the city of Victorville, if that's even remotely possible, but wanted to suggest that we do that so we can compare what we're paying to other cities in or around us, as well as cities that have the same functionality and the same size as us.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to modify this request just a bit. I'm just not sure how realistic this particular request is. What I'd like to see us do is look at all the cities in the High Desert, look at the cities down below, San Bernardino, Colton, Rancho, Fontana, Ontario, a lot of cities in this area. Some have internal legal departments, some contract that service. I think it'll be easier to compare what we have versus what they have and get some comparisons about legal fees than to try to find a city that has everything Victorville has and is the same size. I'm not sure there is such a city anywhere in this state, and I just think we'd waste a lot of time on that. So I think we could accomplish, pretty much accomplish the goal by comparing what the cities do and what they're paying for legal fees.
Is that your motion?
Is that a motion? Do you want a motion?
Yes, we need a motion.
Well, I move that we do a survey of cities in one empire and compare our legal fees and relative services with other cities.
Just for the record, Councilmember Vias did select the motion button, so I will reflect that on.
You concur with the nature of his.
Yes, I do.
All right. I'll go ahead and vote for it, but I'll tell you, the only intangible that you'll never find in any kind of a survey is the history and the knowledge that this legal firm has given us over the years. That is irreplaceable, and it's hard to put a number or quantitative value. Anybody can lowball a law firm into some situation, say, "Oh, I can do it for cheaper," and then you're paying a lot of extra because they've dropped the ball a lot of times on things that our law firm that has been with us for many, many years has done. So whether you do a survey or not, it doesn't change my opinion that this law firm is superb, and I'll stick by them as long as I've got a vote on this council. But I don't think this is necessary, but I certainly won't ruffle any feathers. If you want to make it a 5-0 vote, that's fine with me.
Motion is seconded by Mayor Protem Cabralis. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 17, another request that I had, to provide direction to staff to pursue possibility of reducing or suspending permit fees for a limited period of time. I'd actually just like to amend this request to have staff look at our fee structure, do a public report to the council as to what our fee structure is as compared to other cities. If there are possibilities or areas where it makes sense, where we could defer, reduce, eliminate fees, then, you know, if staff brings that forward as a recommendation, then that's something that the council consider. But just to kind of expand upon what I was trying to get at, I think there is some misperceptions out there with respect to our fees versus other cities around us, so I think that that, it's appropriate to have that presented to us publicly to remind the council where we're at. And if staff comes up with some areas where they think we could absolutely cut back, or reduce, or even defer fees, then I would hope that they would bring that recommendation before us. So that will be my motion, that we ask staff to do that.
I have a comment to make. I have no problems with us working and seeking ways of pulling back on our fee structure. Any governmental agency ought to be in business of doing that, not getting the habit of saying, "This is the way the fees are." No, by the way, we'll add another 2% for growth for next year, and you never get a reversal on those type of things. But we are in an unusual moment of time right here, and that's with respect for the redevelopment agencies, the land issues, and the consolidation and handling of that real estate, and I'm not sure where we are in that. So when we bring these fees back, these fees are supposed to be represented over the guys behind the counters and everything else doing the real hard work, and the quantitative analysis that says, "This is how much it costs us to process this, this is how many man-hours." I don't know how many man-hours we're going to be putting in extra into this thing when we start analyzing what they're taking away of the redevelopment agency, thousands of parcels in this town, and some of which some of the developers may want to legitimately jump on early on, you know. So as we look at this policy, let's bring it back, let's have the staff also look at the potential of impacting us with the man-hours behind the desk there of some of these issues that I don't even know what I'm talking about, except that they're complicated. They're not as simple as they were yesterday. And so as we, I mean, it's a fair request to go, and let's look and see if we can't get a little bit more thrifty with our fee structure here, but keep in mind, there's some complications coming at us, too.
Well, your fees need to have a nexus to the work that's performed or the service, the amount of time it takes, or the service, the product, or the service that's delivered, so that's always taken into consideration.
Bill, I didn't have a card for you, but I...
Actually, this is why I came.
Oh, okay.
This is why I filled the card. I couldn't remember the number.
Oh, okay.
But, and I understand what Mr. Rothschild is saying, from the business side, there's a lot of us, for example, right now, I have to pay some of these fees, and I'm on a thread. And you can delay, and as you delay, there are businesses who go out of business. And so I would appreciate, you know, expediting what you're, you know, this process, recognizing that you have to approve these things, and I understand you've got staff to pay for, but when there are businesses that don't come into Victorville, or who here, and are closing down, then you're losing revenue for the very thing that you're trying to pay for. When I went into this city, as you all know, four years ago, to get those permits, all of those offices were full, and they treated me quite rudely, and now I walk into it, and they're all empty. You can walk in there, and the change of heart, the way that they treated me with respect and kindness within these last two weeks, and I made that comment to the person that I was speaking to, and his comment was, "Yes, I had heard that before, that the people had been kind of rude in the past." And he apologized, and I appreciate that coming from the city worker, but there's a few of them now, they don't have nearly the workload, but I'll tell you, there's a lot of people who have just simply gone out of business. And so when you talk about revenue to the city, it's businesses who provide the revenue, or collect the taxes, and the reason, not because of, you know, the recession that obviously hit, and you guys were caught off-guard, there's no place to blame at this point, but it's moving forward. And if you want to rejuvenate the city of Victorville, allow businesses to try to pursue to keep going. And it's not just the city of Victorville, but all of you, I'm confident, know what's going on with America today. We have been over-regulated to the max, and you can't, this is one thing that I've got to do right now with a building that I've been in for 12 years, and I want to open up the front part in order to be able to maybe sell a few things to survive, because the rest of the building is still being used for party rental equipment. I just want them to say, "Yes, you can sell in the front." And immediately, I now have regulations, and they send me to the internet to look up the regulations, because now in order to use this bathroom, it has to be totally handicap-approved. And I can appreciate, I'm empathetic with those who are handicapped, but I'm a small businessman trying to survive, and the regulations are killing, you know, the sink has to be cleared underneath. Mine is. They've changed it since the time I bought the building, but because I want to, there used to be a furniture store, then it was a church, and the regulation that they want for the measurement under the sink has changed. And because I want to resubmit, until I want to do a retail, I'm going to have to change everything. Because I don't have the money to do all that. And so when you talk about, "Well, these are the stipulations," I can appreciate that, but I just want you to look at it from the business standpoint, too. The laws are depleted, you know? We need you guys to do some things quickly and to back off a little bit in order for us to survive. And that's why I came tonight, okay? So I respect what you're saying, but I hope you can, I just wanted to hear the other side, meaning the businesses that are still trying to survive. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill, I think your comments are completely agreed to up here on the dais. The problem that we face is, what I'm trying to do and what this council may ultimately do with respect to fees only attempts to approach addressing your issues, but it will not solve them, because everything you mentioned up there, it's at the state level, and we have no jurisdiction over the state, unless you can get rid of the state legislature and the governor, those types of things that you need to do, they're not going to go away. We are just, we're the messenger, and you can shoot at the messenger all you want, but unfortunately, those type of things that you're talking about aren't something that we can just waive for you. That's a state regulation. Those things cannot go away, they will not go away unless the state legislature passes laws that makes those regulations go away. What I'm attempting to do, and what I hope the council will look at doing after staff brings back a report, is ultimately trying to reduce some of the fees that you pay here locally. Other than that, those state regulations, the federal issues, there's nothing we can do about that. So just real quick, because I'd like to move on. I could get, we could get into the debate.
I understand there are state regulations and there are city regulations, and when I was in the office just a couple weeks ago, I asked him, "Is this a state regulation or is it a city regulation?" And he said to me, "This is a city regulation." I understand you can't do anything about the state, but Doug Robertson, he knows that there are certain things that the city can do that will help the small businessmen. That's my question.
Well, if there is additional things we can do, I'd hope that we look at it. I just know when it comes to ADA, that's federal, and there's not a whole lot we can do about that. But anyway, would you have a motion?
Motion by Mayor McEckern, second by Mayor Protem Cabralis. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 18 is request to appoint myself as the city's delegate to the SCAG General Assembly to be held April 4th and 5th in Los Angeles, unless anyone else would like to attend in my place.
Give it to him before he freaks out.
Motion by Councilmember Kennedy, second by Mayor Protem Cabralis.
You been down with those yet?
Oh, yeah, I've been, yeah, I'm the representative on the Transportation Committee for sandbags, so.
Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item number 19 is council committee reports. Ms. Vias?
On the Old Town Committee, I met with them, and I'm starting to realize that a lot of the things that they're giving me, that they have issues with, probably would go to another department, so I'm going to ask council for direction of exactly how they want me to handle this. How do you want me to handle this with the meetings? Because I can't be used to bypass, you know, administrative processes that we have in place, but I want to make sure that if they don't get the satisfaction that they're looking for with the departments, that, you know, obviously, they would come here, and then I would bring it up at that time. Is that my understanding?
Well, and Doug, maybe you want to chime in here, but I think that that would be appropriate, and perhaps you should not, not only, or you shouldn't be attending these meetings without someone from staff there that can take these issues back, because as council members, we can't be expected to do the job of staff, so Doug, maybe you...
Right. As a council member, it would be inappropriate for any one...
As a council member, it would be inappropriate for any one of you to come back and direct staff from any meeting. If there's specific requests that the Old Town property owners or the Old Town business owners or any of the folks in our community have, I would request that you make those requests of staff and then allow us the time to respond if, in fact, you know, they're unhappy with the decision or unhappy with the treatment that they get from staff, certainly. That's why the council is here, one of the reasons. But I would just ask that staff be given an opportunity to respond to those things in, in an appropriate timeframe. We'd be happy to send, if they have a specific item on their agenda regarding, say, code enforcement or, or traffic or something like that, we would be happy to send someone from city staff to, to come and talk to the, to the business owners about that issue. Just let us know when, when those things come up.
Okay. I forwarded five items to you. You said you were going to go over those items and get back to the committee.
Correct. Right. You sent those over the weekend. I've got a response, an email response prepared to you. That is, I would say, about 50% complete. There's some details that I want to be able to fill in accurately before I send that off. Would you like for me to send that to the committee instead or to respond to the committee instead?
Yeah, and just CC me would be best.
Okay, I can do that.
And then also, if the committee can be given the contact information of a designated person to get in contact with.
Yeah, they can call my office, and my secretary can, can direct them as to, you know, what department they might need. I would request that, that as you do that, you try to focus on one issue per meeting, and we'll, we'll try to get somebody there from that, from that department, and make sure that their questions are answered to the extent that it can be answered by staff. Obviously, some policy decisions we may need to bring back to the city council for, for consideration, to the extent that they're more of a policy decision.
So it would be whatever he gives you. If you're not satisfied, then you would come to the council. Otherwise, he'll determine what needs a policy decision for the council. And that's all I have.
Mike, anything?
The Mojave Desert Air Quality Management District Board that I've sat on for the last 80,000 years, we're going to take another shot at AB 32. In concert with our supervisor and myself, we're working within the board to resurrect again the appeal to the governor and the state legislature to suspend AB 32, the CO2 issue, and it's no small issue. This, this council alone has spent a quarter of a million dollars this last year with equipment that was perfectly good, meeting air quality standards that were totally unnecessary, and multiply that by all 500 cities in the state, varying degrees, and you can see the magnitude, just on local government, not even counting the small businesses and others that have incredible, ridiculous issues associated with that. So we're going to go at it again. We've got an agenda coming up here to ask the governor and all of the air quality districts to take a position. Now, this air quality district, by the way, there's 16 members on the board, and we had no, no votes the last time in suspending AB 32. We did have three suspensions. This time, I anticipate all but one saying yes again, and some other air quality district local boards have indicated now an interest in asking the legislature to suspend AB 32. So it's not a small issue. It's one of those onerous regulations out there that has no tangible value to us, but is totally murdering local government, small businesses, and the growth in, in this state. So we're going at it again. I look, see it coming, to be enteeed up here on our agenda coming up in a couple of weeks.
Just an update on the audit committee. We, we met with the auditors last, two weeks ago, and this last week received the final version of the audit reports. Did everybody get those? I think they were sent by email, and I believe the auditors will present those in a meeting in...
Doug?
I believe it's scheduled for, currently scheduled for the second meeting in March, based on the availability of the, the audit partner on the job.
And just to summarize, just the audit report, we will have a, again, a growing concern modification for the city and for the RDA, which was an easy call to make because it's no longer in existence. Some of the other entities will not, but the auditors will go through that. And I think as our final conclusion in our, in our last meeting is that we've, we've had significant progress this year. More to come, but this has been a movement in the right direction financially.
Just a report on Sandbag and our Mountain Desert Committee, which met last Friday. We did vote to approve a funding agreement for the Ranchero Interchange in Asparia. That was unanimous at Mountain Desert. Now go to the full board, but it's a unique opportunity to move that project forward, which will add additional traffic relief here in the Victor Valley. That project is ready to go, but it's got a very tight timeline. It has to be done, I believe, by the end of May in order for it to go forward. So Sandbag staff and the city of Asparia are working on that, but the Mountain Desert Committee did approve that unanimously, so that'll go before the board at the first meeting in March. All right, we'll move on to council reports, discussion, possible action regarding items for the upcoming city council agenda. Ms. Rothschild?
Hi, ma'am.
Kennedy?
No.
Vias?
Yes. I've been noticing that there seems to be an increasing number of homeless people here in Victorville. I don't know if anyone's noticed, but over where Stoddard Wells Road is, where the Mojave River is at, I've noticed an increasing number of camps, tents. They're even actually making buildings down there. Seen a lot of vagrants. Even Old Town businesses are complaining about the number of transits. We had one run over the other day. I, I know that we agendized this before, asking the staff to give a report, but they came back with the county's doing it, they seem to be doing fine with it, but over the last couple of months, I've been noticing a, a large increase in that, and I, I wanted to know if, if something's happened. Did the shelters close? Did they lose their funding? Are they turning people away? I'd like to agendize a staff report on what's going on with the homeless in this area and down at the river. Is there a problem? And is it growing? And do we need to address it?
Okay. Yeah, we can try to put something together. I'm not aware of anything that has closed recently. I'm not sure that we have any old census data of the homeless to be able to compare to, but certainly, we can take a look at that if that's the direction of the council.
I don't care about that.
And then I had asked in the last meeting for the numbers, I was a little bit concerned about how much, I guess we absorb the RDA staff and the cost of that with the benefits and the salaries. I was a little bit concerned of, we only have 30,000 in the reserves, how are we paying for that? So if we could have, like, a report on that or something with that?
Something?
And that's it.
None. I don't have anything, so we'll go to reports from staff and council members. Should change that around, Doug, so I make sure I call you, on you first.
You don't want to forget me again. I've corrected you too many times. Just two things. One, you'll probably hate me for stealing the thunder a little bit from me again, Ryan, but number one, Lisa Project is, the last weekend it's in Victorville is this weekend. I would encourage anybody to go to that. It's a presentation, it takes about a half an hour to walk through to learn more about child abuse and some of the things that, that you can do to, to help prevent it, and it's just a very meaningful, powerful exhibit. I would encourage everyone to, to attend that. If you can't go this weekend, it is actually heading down to Rancho Cucamonga for the month of March, and it's going to be in the Victoria Gardens area if you can't go this weekend. Also, Mr. Mayor, you're aware that the construction has started in the La Mesa and Esqali Interchange. The big, one of the big impacts to the citizens of Victorville is going to be the closure of La Mesa and Esqali Roads, where they intersect with Amargosa and Mariposa Roads. That closure is scheduled for tomorrow. I haven't heard that it's slipped at all, so if you travel through those areas, the Amargosa and Mariposa will stay open, but you will no longer be able to make the connection to the, to the roads that run east and west from those roads.
Thank you for stealing that.
You're welcome. Just in case you didn't get to anything.
I just wanted to, to say one more thing about the homeless. My concern also is, are there families down there? Are there children down there in the river? Are there children homeless? Because I'm seeing, actually, today, when I was at Carl's Jr., I saw some children that looked really dirty, and they were begging, so it made me think that, did they come up from the riverbed? What, where did they come from? What was the problem?
Sure, and we can have maybe some code enforcement staff take a look at that. We don't have any facilities in the city to handle that, but we do have contacts within the county that can, can step in if we find something like that to be the case.
Okay. Well, I, I don't, I, I just want to make sure that we address it. I don't want to make their life more miserable than necessary, but I also want to make sure that the children are safe, so.
The Route 66 Committee for the International Festival, and I went to one of their meetings a couple of weeks ago, I guess it was, and they have a pretty impressive committee. There was probably about 25 people in that room, but I know they're, at some point, they're going to need some assistance from the city. Obviously, monetary assistance is not going to be available, but, you know, there are some other resources that perhaps the city could, could make available to the committee.
I ran into a petition signer in front of Walmart this last weekend, and two of them that were being circulated, one of them was to make the state legislature part-time, 1,500 a month. I guess what they want to do and pay them, and they show up, I don't know, a few weeks a month, a year, just like Texas or somebody. And the other one is, they are circulating a petition for making the board of supervisors part-time as well. So I saw both petitions out there last weekend. I'm not going to tell you if I sign or not.
Do you think they're going to pass?
I think if they make the ballot, they'll pass without any trouble at all, but they are doing the signature ads right now.
Just, just to make everybody aware, and I think that people at the Daily Press listen to this all the way to the end, so perhaps they'll pick up on it in the, in the paper. We need to be cautious driving Mariposa and Amargosa over the next year, 18 months while these projects are underway. It's going to be a nuisance, it's going to slow us down, we're not used to dealing with, you know, that slow-moving traffic along those two streets. We should avoid those streets while this construction project is underway and, and be patient, and don't drive in stupid, foolish ways along either of those streets. We've got construction people, we've got lives at stake. It's an important project, let's, let's not have any unnecessary casualties on this thing. Everybody needs to be patient and careful.
Well, I completely concur, and before we adjourn, I'll just let you know that I will drive La Mesa home for the last time tonight until that project's back open, so with that, we're adjourned.